Till the green light comes on. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, Clay County Planning and Zoning Meeting. We have a few housekeeping rules, please. Tonight, we will hear five cases. We will begin with a report from the planning and zoning staff that will summarize each case prior to any discussion the board members may have. We will then ask the applicant to step up to the podium to ask or answer any questions and present support of their application. We ask the applicant to begin by stating their name and address for the record as these meetings are recorded. We will then ask for any public participation that may support the case being heard, and then anyone that may oppose the case being heard. Again, asking any participant to begin by stating their name and address. Please remember, the topic of discussion needs to remain pertinent to the case being heard. The purpose of the planning and zoning board is to hear the cases and make recommendations to the Clay County Commission. The commission will review and decide the cases heard tonight on April 12th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this room. Could we begin tonight with a roll call of attendance?
Terry Griffin.
Present.
David Rotis.
Present.
Mike Brinkley.
Present.
Brad Scarlett.
Present.
Jerry Nolte.
Here.
Mark Beggs.
Present.
Randall Morris. And Chairman Tom Decker.
Present.
Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of our March 7th meeting as presented?
Move to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Abstain.
Jerry Nolte.
Abstain, I was not here at the last meeting.
Mark Beggs.
Abstain.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very well, the first case we'll hear tonight is case number April 23-23-120CUP. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, would like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
Uh, so, want to apologize a little bit because it's gonna be difficult for the audience, because eventually there's gonna be a TV behind the commissioners, so I know the audience is not gonna see, uh, the PowerPoint tonight, so I apologize for that. So, first case today is a renewal of a conditional use permit for the Tobacco Barn Farm. It is a wedding event venue located north of Carney, off of 33 Highway. Got it pulled up there on the screen, it's approximately 40 acres, unplatted. The original conditional use permit was approved by the county commission in 2016 with a time period of 10 years. Obviously, those 10, 10 years are not up yet, but the applicant wanted to come in, get the conditional use permit renewed for an additional time period. It's currently zoned agricultural, it has access off of 33 Highway. The land development code tells us that in ag zoning, a conditional, uh, conditional use permit is required, uh, for what the LDC considers entertainment indoor and outdoor. As far as staff, uh, believes with the submittal from the applicant, there have been no substantial changes to the renewal of this conditional use permit. So here's the surround, uh, the surrounding area. The lot is, uh, located, located in the red. You can see the CC Highway is to the north. 33 Highway runs on the west boundary of the red lot, or the par, subject parcel, and you can see the city limits of Holt to the northeast in gray, and I-35 located to the east. So this is kind of the northeast corner of the unincorporated section of Clay County. The, we always look at the comprehensive plan in the land development code with any conditional use permit. There's six criteria that the board should look at with each conditional, conditional use permit. Those were included in the staff report that was sent to the planning and zoning commissioners. Those were looked at more strictly during that, uh, first round, because it was a new conditional use permit. But staff believes those criteria have been addressed. This is also located in the rural low-density district of the county, and one of the approved uses in that district is recreation, and staff believes this falls within that recreation use. So some additional information, uh, to date, we have not received any opposition leading up to this meeting. Now, there was some opposition to the original conditional use permit in 2016, but we have not received any new opposition. We published this case in the newspaper, posted a sign on site, and sent certified letters to every property owner that lives or owns property within 1,000 feet. As part of the original submittal, we looped in outside agencies, including MoDOT, Missouri Department of Natural Resources, the Fire District, and the Water District. So, uh, MDNR was part of this approval because of the septic system. So it, it, as part of the initial review, meant an exemption through MDNR, um, and Clay County Health, uh, and was allowed to operate as a, basically they have a tank system that gets pumped every roughly two months. Staff has received no opposition or concerns expressed from any of those outside agencies. They were contacted again with this renewal of the conditional use permit. Staff is recommending approval with eight conditions. Just highlight a couple of those conditions. A time period of 10 years for the conditional use permit. We stuck with the original. Obviously, the planning and zoning commission could choose to change that time period. Same from the previous conditional use permit. Screening must be maintained to block the view of the parking areas. They've done a good job of that, we have no complaints about that, but we wanted to keep that as a condition in case some of that landscaping would, would die. And then, if there are substantiated complaints, this conditional use permit could be revoked, but it would have to go back in front of the planning and zoning commission and county commission to be revoked. It could not be revoked by staff. Wanted to share a couple pictures that the applicant provided of the finished product. There you can see the inside and the outside seating area. And the, the applicant obviously did submit a, a business plan, uh, that was attached to the staff report that provided additional detail. Uh, again, since 2016, we have not received any complaints on this conditional use permit. The applicant is present, and staff would be happy to answer any questions that the commissioners have.
All right, thank you, Kip. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? With none, if the applicant is present, if you could step up to the podium, please?
Hello.
Hello.
Um, my name's Julie Cox, 17, 808 Northeast 184th Street in Holt. This is my family farm, and so since being approved in October 2016, um, we've become, I think, a really important part of the community for Carney and Holt, and, um, just, uh, I've really enjoyed, enjoyed the journey. So, we're now touring beyond our, our expiration date, so we'd like to, um, kind of secure that renewal, so that we can confidently tell these young couples that, um, they'll have a venue when they want to get married.
Sure. And do you understand the staff's report and the conditions of the attachments, and have any questions?
I do.
Good, all right. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, do the board members have any questions for the applicant or staff? With none, I would call for a motion for the renewal of the conditional use permit with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
Move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the second case we'll hear this evening is case number April 23-121RZ/P. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
Alrighty, so for this case, this is gonna be the rezoning of preliminary of Clay's timber. Currently, the property, um, part of it is zoned, um, the other part is, um, unplatted. Uh, so, the unplatted part's 52 acres, um, the platted part of it's gonna be 24. This is, uh, from the Heritage Hills second plat, this was recorded back in 1999. Again, the, the unplatted part is gonna be zoned agricultural, and, uh, the platted parts, uh, in older zoning dis, or, yeah, older zoning district that we use, um, residential low-density, or R1A. Currently, the access comes off of 92 Highway. The proposal is to break this into five lots. Lots one, two, and three, and five are gonna be zoned, um, gonna be zoned R1 or residential, uh, rural, because that meets our current standards for, um, per acreage size. Lot four of this property is gonna stay zoned ag, um, and part of it's gonna be rezoned from that R1A. There is agricultural land preservation added to it, as you can see on the screen, that's approximately what that location's gonna be. And per MoDOT's request, there's gonna be shared, um, shared driveway agreements for it. So, um, lots one and two are gonna have a shared driveway, and then lots three, um, three, four, and five are also gonna have shared, um, accesses. This is gonna be the surrounding area, uh, you can see here, that's the, in the red, that's gonna be the, um, proposed lot. Over here to the, uh, to the east is gonna be city limits of Carney. Down in the southwest corner there, that's gonna be A Highway, and then that black line that runs across your screen there is gonna be 92. Uh, this property falls under our urban services tier of our comprehensive plan. It meets the exception to 20-acre minimum, with each lot being 10 acres or more, with an agricultural land preservation. This is our standard, um, rezoning criteria. This should have been attached with your guys' staff report. Staff believes that this does meet, um, the rezoning criteria. Staff hasn't received any opposition leading up to the planning and zoning meeting. Uh, we, again, like the rest of our cases, we publish this in the newspaper, we post a sign on site, um, and we sent a total of 35 certified letters. Uh, we had it, have any objections from outside agencies, um, and staff is recommending approval with four conditions. They include changes to recording copies of the plat, um, shared driveway agreements, and, um, the pond on lot four to be inspected by NRCS. Uh, staff would be happy to answer any questions the commission might have, and the applicant is present.
All right, very good, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the case being heard?
I've got, I've got a question. So Heritage Hills is to the east there, how come this didn't get subdivided into lots that are more in line with what's at Heritage Hills? I can see there are like six acre lots over there, and these are gonna be 10. How come we're not doing something more in line with what's there? Just so everything blends together better?
Yeah, I'll defer that question, though, Kip.
I'm sorry?
I'll defer that question to Kip.
So, I, I think, um, the reason that that lot, so that lot was part of that Heritage Hills, but it was separated by that creek, so I think that's why that acreage was initially left as a large, I can't, it was 20-plus acres. And the current comp plan calls for anything being 10-plus in this area, unless the developer would wanna do infrastructure. The property owner in this case has chosen not to go smaller than 10, but staff feels it, it, um, meets the current comp plan, but there wasn't really any infrastructure to come off of through Heritage Hills because of that creek, in my opinion.
But they could have come off 92.
They could have, they, yeah, they could have chose to, to, but, we would have to look at that, too, because we had to do shared driveways on this because of the access point, so I don't know that MoDOT would have been too keen on putting another street off of that area of 92, but it could have been explored.
I guess that was, that was my point, you've got more than one access points off 92. If you'd done more like what you'd heard at Chills, put streets in, you'd have had one access point off of 92.
Yeah, and the, the purpose of this, and the applicant may speak of it, is to, uh, create lots for her children, so I don't think the thought there was to ever create a, a true subdivision.
Okay, thanks.
Right, do any other board members have questions for staff? All right, thanks, Shane. If the applicant's present, she could step up to the podium, please?
I'm Susie Gibson. My address is 12600 State Route 92, Carney, Missouri. I live on lot five, as it exists. To answer your question a little bit, I may have some insight there. When we bought the property back in 19, mm, 2000, I think, um, the 24-acre kind of triangular-shaped property, they told us that the reason that they couldn't divide it is because it didn't perk, um, so they weren't able to divide it in the same way that the rest of the lots were, because it's kinda sitting on a hill, and there's a lot of rock there. So it, that's, that was our understanding as to why they didn't subdivide it that way. And he did not wanna put in a bridge over that road, that was pretty cost, cost ineffective for that, so, that was our understanding, just so that you know that.
Thanks.
Um, this property that I currently live on, I used to live on with my husband, Clay. Clay grew up on the property next to us, which is 50, I think, 2 acres, and we have three children. And back in 21, spring of 21, we decided that we wanted to subdivide it, as you see on the screen, so that each of our children could have 10 acres to build a home to live next to us. We wanted to keep the back, um, for play area for the grandkids and stuff. My husband passed away in November of 21, and we put this on the back burner. So we started this process, and then we stopped it, and now I'm starting it again because I'm in a position to do that. So some of our children are here, and, um, they wanna build houses there, so that's why we're doing this. I think we've met all the criteria, and I have paperwork from when my husband went through all this, and then, again, I double-checked everything, so.
Well, we're very sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
And Susie, do you understand the staff's report, and are you in agreement with the conditions and set out in the exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? And with no further discussion, I would call for a motion for the rezoning of Clay's timber.
Move to approve the rezoning.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ethan, we can roll right into the motion of preliminary plat, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With the rezoning being approved, I would call for a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Clay's timber with the conditions attached as are set out in Exhibit A.
Move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The third case we'll hear this evening is case number April 23-122F. And could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the, uh, staff report as part of the official record.
All right, so be it.
All right, so this is gonna be the final plat for Clay's timber. This is gonna be, too far away. We, we look at the Section 151-3.6D of the 2011 Land Development Code. We believe that, uh, that it, that it meets this section of code, and that the final plat is compliant with the preliminary. Uh, again, our recommendation is for approval with four conditions. They, in regards to changes, uh, changes to the recording copy of the plat, shared driveway agreements, and, um, that pond inspection on lot four by the NRCS. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
All right, thank you, Kip. Is there a, do any board members have questions for staff? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, come on, give me credit for that one, I want credit.
Sorry, Shane, I didn't mean to embarrass you. With no questions from the board, would the applicant please step up?
And I'm gonna tease the applicant a little bit, because I, I, I'm gonna tease her about her, she's got a binder, she's very organized, so she's got everything in that binder. So I wish, I wish I was that way.
Here I am again, Susie Gibson. I still live at 12600 State Route 92, Carney, I'm sorry. So, I still live in lot five. I'm sorry, I'm a little more emotional than I thought I would be. Clay started this, so I expected him to finish it.
We understand this is kind of a formality, it's the, the final plat, it's identical to the preliminary, and so, I think you understand the staff's report, and you're in agreement with the
Yes.
...conditions, and, and I think we're all good. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Susie.
Thanks.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, I would call for a motion for the final plat of Clay's timber with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
Move to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could we have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Beggs.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next case we'll hear this evening is case number April 23-123RZ/F. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
All right, so this case is our, is a rezoning and final, uh, for Varnell Estates. Currently, we're, we're dealing with three lots here. Each of these three lots are platted. Each, so, the blue lot on your screen is gonna be, uh, lot one of Woodland, um, and then the, it'd be the yellowish and green color is gonna be, um, lots one and two of White Ridge Estates. This whole, each, or all three of these lots were zoned residential rural, um, and they get access from 120th Street and Fishing River Road. So the proposal is to keep it, the, for the most part, keep it the same. We're gonna be rezoning it for, uh, to residential urban rural, single-family, because each of these lots meet that zoning, um, classification. And the, again, access from 120th and Fishing River Road. So the unique thing about this case is, this is gonna be a lot line adjustment, we're not creating any additional lots. We are, um, actually fixing a, uh, would be a code case with a barn on that north lot there is actually over the property line. So with this new, um, this new, these new lot lines, we'll be fixing that issue. We also, with the second lot there, it'll be extending that lot down, um, to match with the fence line, which is what, uh, the property owner previously thought was the property line. Um, and then, uh, the lot three is essentially going to stay the same. Again, we're not building, or we're not doing any additional lots with this one, it's a pretty simple lot line adjustment. We have to rezone it just because when this was rezoned initially, um, when it was first platted, it fell under that criteria. Now, it's in a different criteria, so, uh, this is gonna be the surrounding area, as you can see here, uh, in the blue, that's gonna be the, um, these three lots that are in question. Over to the east there, in that little red, is gonna be, uh, the subdivision Private Gardens. And then even further east, uh, will be the subdivision of Prairie Field, and then down in the southwest, there's gonna be city limits of Kansas City. Uh, you can also see A Highway along on your screen there, too. This falls under our urban services tier of our 2008 comprehensive plan. Again, this, this is gonna be the same, um, rezoning criteria that goes with any of our cases. Staff believes that it's consistent with it, and that it meets. We haven't received any opposition, uh, up to this, uh, meeting. Again, we published this in the newspaper, posted a sign on the site, and sent out 24 certified letters. We did not require any outside agency review, just because, again, we're dealing with a, um, lot line adjustment. We, staff recommended approval with one condition, and that's, uh, changes to the recording copy of the plat. Another part I would like to, um, clear up as well, uh, they're gonna change the name of the plat. Currently, it's set as, uh, Varnell Estates, and it's a replat of lot one, Woodland, and lot one and two of White Ridge Estates. They're gonna remove the Varnell, um, Estates name on it, and it's just gonna be the replat, so, um, would just like that to be on the record. Staff would be happy to answer any questions the commissioners might have, and, uh, the applicant is present.
All right. All right, thank you, Shane, I, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
Would appear that lot one, the property line shifted to the south, so was, did that lot grow in size a little bit from the original?
I would say that it does grow. I, I think there was some conversations on whether or not there was a, uh, a survey back in the seventies when this, or it might have been late 60s, 70s when this was done, that it was not surveyed correctly. But I believe it would grow somewhat in size, just so we can meet those setbacks for a building.
So then, lot two is basically staying the same size, 'cause both of its property lines are shifting south, and lot three is losing acreage or And lot three is losing acreage or footage?
Yeah, I would say, yeah. One's definitely getting bigger, two's staying roughly the same. It may be slightly bigger, slightly smaller, and three's definitely getting smaller. You can see the, that one building where the cutout is, where the blue kind of juts down to the, to the south, that building was actually on the property line.
Yeah, I see.
And nobody was aware of that. I think somebody had a survey done, and they said, oh, crap. These lines aren't where we thought they were, and that's why they're making these adjustments. And it was good that all three property owners were able to work together to come to an agreement to make this work.
All right. Thank you. Do any of the board members have questions for staff? All right, thank you, Shane. If the applicant's present, if you could step up to the podium, please.
Good evening. Gary Varnell, 11819 Northeast, 120th Street, Kearney, Missouri. And oh, crap, was not what I said when I saw surveyors putting a survey line through the middle of my outbuilding. I thought, oh, man, we got problems here. So we've been working with Kip here for several months trying to get this straight because when I bought my property in 2008, I was taken out by the owner and a RE/MAX agent and said, that rebar right there and that fence line and that tree line is your property line. Okay, looks good to me, you know, those old fence lines right there between me and Jennifer and Randy. And so I, okay, that's, that's, you know, I assumed that looked good to me, but like I said, whenever somebody up the hill starts resurveying, look at, no, this is a real property line, and my building was off over on Randy's Seaway. We're trying to fix that by moving the property lines where it, my building's on my property, not on Randy's. And Randy's been real helpful with working about that. And so in the process of, Kip told us we should probably just replat instead of going to the, the process of trying to, end domain, whatever, that you've been taking care of it for 10 years and mowing it. So we listened to Kip, so we're doing replating. Of course, in the process, I, I don't have 10 acres, so that's, I guess, what the rezoning is about, so.
Well, it's nice that your neighbors were all willing to work together and resolve the issue, so. Mr. Varnell, do you understand the, the staff's report and the conditions they've attached to the report?
I'm sorry?
Do you, do you understand the staff's report?
Yes.
And in agreement with the conditions that they're attaching?
Yes.
All right. Do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Nope, nope. Kip's been fantastic helping us get through this problem, so.
Well, good, good. Do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? And then is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With no further discussion, Kip, are we combining the rezoning and final plat into one motion?
No, we'll do two separate votes, please.
Okay, very good. With no further discussion, I would call for a motion for the rezoning of Varnell Estates. Replat of lot one, Woodland, and replat lot one, two of White Ridge Estates.
Moved to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
And Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I think we can roll right into the motion for the final plat of Varnell Estates with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A. Have a motion, please.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Next case this evening is case number April 23-124RZ/F. If we could have a staff report, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to add the staff report as part of the official record.
So be it.
All right, so this is going to be another rezoning and final. This is the replat of lots eight and nine of Sunset Acres. Currently, the total, both of the lots are about roughly six acres. It's platted. There is two, currently two lots there. Sunset Acres was recorded back in 1975 and zoned residential rural or R1 and has access from 188th Street. The proposal is to combine both of these lots. We would have to rezone it to residential Ranjet or R5 because that meets that current zoning district. Again, has that access of 188th. The applicant chose to put the agricultural land preservation in the back there. In the back there also is some flood plain as well, and there are some stream setbacks there, too. So again, this is a lot combination. This is not, we're not creating any additional lots from, we're actually subtracting. And again, part of our job, right, is to be sure that we are creating these billable lots. So there also is a 50-foot petroleum line easement that runs through the property. You can see it on that red there. It's a pretty rough estimate. This is going to be the surrounding areas of the proposed project. In the red there, that's going to be the, the project. You can see it's a lot of agricultural zone land, very little R1. This is going to be up in the north, be the northeast corner of Clay County, a little bit outside of Lawson. This falls under our rural load density tier. It meets the exception to the 20 acre minimum because it's five acres or more and including that agricultural land preservation. The same land, or the same rezoning criteria that we, we follow with each of our cases. Staff believes that it does meet. We haven't received any opposition leading up to this meeting. Again, we published this in the newspaper, we posted a sign out on site, and we sent a total of eight certified letters. We did not receive any objections from outside agencies from this being an already platted subdivision. The staff has recommended approval with the one condition, and that is changes to the recording copies of the plat. Staff would be happy to answer any questions commissioners might have, and the applicant is present.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do any of the board members have questions for staff regarding the application being With none, would the applicant step up to the podium, please?
Good evening. I'm Elliot, excuse me, Elliot Craven. My wife Amanda and I live at 7412 Walnut Street in Kansas City right now. As Shane, who has also been great to work with, has said, we're wanting to combine these two lots here. We'd like to build our, our new home in the, in the center there, so we don't want to have any easements or anything like that. And otherwise, that's basically it. We just want, we like, we love the area and we'll build.
Well, welcome to the country, so.
Thank you.
Do you understand the staff's report, and you're in agreement with the conditions and the corrections on the survey?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do any of the board members have questions for the applicant? All right, with none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that supports the application being heard? With none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment that opposes the application being heard? With none, I would call for a motion for the rezoning of the replat of lots eight and nine Sunset Acres.
Moved to approve.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Very well, could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. I think we can roll right into a motion for the final plat of the replat of lots eight and nine Sunset Acres with the conditions attached as set out in Exhibit A.
Moved to approve with conditions.
Very well, do we have a second?
Second.
Could I have a roll call vote?
David Rotis.
Yes.
Mike Brinkley.
Yes.
Brad Scarlett.
Yes.
Terry Griffin.
Yes.
Jerry Nolte.
Yes.
Mark Bags.
Yes.
Chairman Tom Decker.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Craven, could you wait till your conversation, either I'll be in the hallway or till we finish our meeting, please? You know, you're free to go if you like, so. Yep, yep, yep. I think that's it for our regular agenda. If staff has any updates on
Yeah, I've got, I've got a few comments. I wanted to get it on the record to thank Marvin Davis, who served on the board from 2018 through 2022, so thank you, Marvin. And then I want to say welcome to Mark Bags, Jerry Nolte, and then we'll also have Randall Morse joining us next month. So welcome, we appreciate you being here. Update for cases from last month, which included Lincoln Acres up off J Highway near the Clinton County line, the Paradise Storage Conditional Use Permit renewal, and then the Quail Run Farm, which was off Plattsburgh Road. Those were all approved by the county commission. Best news yet is we did not receive any applications in May, so you get a month off. So that's good, but expect a large, a longer meeting in June. We're going to have a pretty hefty Land Development Code amendment in front of you in June, so be prepared for some discussion on that. Other than that, I think that's all staff has.
All right, well, if there's no further discussion, then meeting adjourned.